It's thirty, I'm gonna call this study session of Littleton City Council to order on, what? On February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, so.
I know.
Happy Valentine's Day. Red sweater twine over there. So, all of council is present tonight. We have two items on the agenda to talk about tonight. First is Geneva Village policy options and the second will be legislative session preview and updates. And so the first one with Geneva Village, I know this is coming back after, oh, nine months, something like that, ten months, ten months since the last discussion. So we'll have staff present some more information, have some direction. But I just wanna preface it with council that we're not looking at having formal direction tonight on, you know, the high-level binary option of renovate or do something else right now. So we'll have presentations, some discussion, and then in, at a formal meeting, at a regular meeting, hopefully in less than ten months, probably in a month or two, come back and give direction on the next steps. Want to do this to have council have some time to think about it, also have time for the public to digest the information here, give some feedback, have staff reach out to them, I know this is all in the presentation here, but just wanted to preface all that. So that's where we are with that, so I'm gonna turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. As the mayor said, you last had a conversation about Geneva Village in April. And the kind of outtake or the product of that, discussion was request for staff to go a little deeper on some of the costs associated with rehabilitating the units. And so we've done that, and we also, I think, have gone another step tonight with thinking about what would that, how could we, if council chose to rehab rehabilitate units, how could we do that? What would it mean for rents and all those things? Backing up one step, I'll say, you know, the choices that the council's trying to make in this process, you know, are about a part of the community, this community that has been there for sixty years. And we're talking about, based on a lot of the repairs, upgrades that are gonna have to have to happen, if not right now, probably within a couple of years, as those, as the systems in those buildings continue to need repair attention. We're talking about, you know, what's the right decision for the next twenty, forty, or sixty years? So those choices are, you know, far-reaching and impact the people who live there now. And I think the emphasis of this presentation that you'll see tonight really is, yes, about what it would take if we were to rehab those units, but it's also about the people that are there now, and how could we treat the people with dignity and respect as we go down the line, whichever choice the council makes? So that's kind of the emphasis tonight, and I think that's reflected in the next steps that we'll be recommending at the conclusion of the presentation. So with that, this is a team effort tonight. We have Assistant City Manager Kathleen Osher, Public Works Utilities Director Keith Reister, and our Finance Director Tiffany Hooton, who have all been working on this issue and will present various pieces tonight. So we can move, let's see, move on slides, next slide. So the broad policy options that you'll be hearing about tonight regarding Geneva Village are whether we should rehabilitate and preserve existing housing, or, you know, have some revisioning and relocate and redevelop, relocate some of the folks who are there now, help them to relocate and redevelop the property. And you'll see a couple of the goals there under each of those options that could be achieved with each of those options. I think I'll go on to the next slide. I'll turn it over to Kathleen, give a little context.
Yeah, so I think most of you are familiar with the International Geneva Association and Geneva Lodge, purchased in nineteen, or, yes, nineteen twenty-seven. It was really converted into a retreat and care facility for former hotel and restaurant employees. It was really the only Geneva Lodge that was established here in the United States. And then in nineteen sixty-four, because of the demand for spaces for retired married members of the Geneva Association, the twenty-eight units were built. So there was a pretty concerted effort and partnership between both architect Eugene Sternberg and then Denver Caterer Max Hummel to kind of come together and plan these apartments that could accommodate married members of the Geneva Association. The property profile, again, the property is owned by the City of Littleton, purchased in nineteen seventy-five. It includes twenty-eight units and a common area. It was managed by our Housing Authority, South Metro Housing Options until twenty eighteen. It comprises two point eight one acres. It's not historically designated, but could be eligible. And it is designed, again, by Eugene Sternberg, one of part of the mid-century modern inventory that we have, such a strong presence up here in Littleton. It does not comply with the National Building Codes or International Building Codes or ADA standards. So the current units in their makeup, ten studios at roughly four hundred square feet, ten one-bedrooms at roughly six hundred square feet, and eight two-bedrooms at roughly seven hundred square feet, with a common area of about thirty-eight hundred square feet, so a total of nineteen four hundred. Some of the key considerations as we have our discussion this evening is the protecting and planning of for permanent residents. I think there's a slight typo there, it's actually fourteen leased units. The rehabilitation costs that we have now from a specialty contractor that specializes in the rehabilitation of similar type units, and they've given us a more in-depth assessment and estimate. Obviously, a consideration for council is always the prudent stewardship of city funds and property. This is a city asset, the value of the historic architecture, and then weighing that against the potential for future development or more affordable housing. There are a number of finance mechanisms that we'll walk through this evening. We've really identified two that could be potential options. That would, of course, have an impact on future rent for tenants. And the one thing that we know in either scenario, if council were to proceed with a couple of the suggestions of tonight, there would be a process for assisting residents, either in the case of rehabilitation or redevelopment, as we know that that would require some movement to be accommodating or to accommodate either of those. We know that the city's ongoing role in ownership and property management was a topic that we covered just briefly as a consideration in April, and I think that that's something that we would encourage more discussion around as well. So at this point, I would love to turn it over to Keith Reister.
I like these slides, nothing on them, they're easier to deal with. So basically, what I wanted to walk you through is sort of what is the, what would be the concept of rehabilitation? And what would look that, what would that look like financially? There's twenty-eight units and a common area. None of those are ADA compliant or building code compliant. They were all constructed a long time ago when the codes were very different. You would assume after sixty years that most of your mechanical systems and your electrical systems are aged past the standard lifespan. So that's kind of the background there. So there's been a lot of different prices I've seen for over the years since I've been here. Back in twenty sixteen, Schmo did a, an assessment, they just had an outside firm come in and do an assessment. That didn't, all that did was talk about the cost to do it, and I noted there, there's no, there was no labor included in that estimate, so you really can't build it without labor. Twenty nineteen is part of our broader, citywide, for all of our facilities, we did a facility condition index assessment across all of our city facilities, and we included these in there at the time. And all they really did was look at, based on square footage, the year of the building and the makeup of the stuff in there, what would be the, just pure replacement value at that point, if you're gonna do it? And then in twenty twenty-one, we brought a contractor in to just do a walkthrough with us, and we had a combination of, you know, a contractor that would specialize in remediation, another contractor, so it wasn't all like under one DC window, general contractor window. So then this year, over the, in this past fall, we brought in a specialty contractor that works on rehabilitation of, you know, commercial residential units like this. Some of their examples are, you know, like a residential, multifamily residential that burned in a fire in Boulder, and part of it was destroyed. They come in and do that rehabilitation work, that's what they specialize in. And so we asked them to do that, they went out and got some, did some work with subcontractors. And so that number right there that you see is basically just over five million dollars. And that number does not include any significant site improvements or ADA improvements. It includes bringing it up to building code and a few other things, but there's also discussion points about what would end up in your final design going down that path, so go ahead.
Keith, would it bring it up to, in the building code, the ADA within the building code?
No, that's not included in there. And part of, so one of the questions, like, for example, if we're decided to go forward with rehabilitation, my first suggestion would be to go hire an architect to do that, because the units today that you have in there are not similar to units that you would see in this type of arrangement today. You know, most of the units that would be in the marketplace today would have in-unit washer dryer that are out there in the marketplace versus a centralized location. You know, you would probably build in some ADA compliance, not necessarily compliance, but ADA planning in your restrooms, for example, based on the likely age of your residents. So that's where it would be the next step. So what it includes up there is, you know, basically HVAC, electrical demolition, abatement, appliances, you know, finished carpet, windows, obviously, across the board, energy efficiency, insulation, lighting, you know, windows mobilization, onsite management, and we put it, I worked with them and I put a twenty percent contingency on that, my experience in significant remodels like this or something this old, you know, you're gonna open that wall and you're gonna, you know, you're gonna find something that you're surprised with over the course of the job. So that's a little bit of room there. It doesn't include significant, you know, a lot of ADA work. And if you, any of the exterior ADA work would require significant site improvements. Basically, what you see in here is basically repaving the parking lot, as opposed to going in there and redoing your sidewalks, all your ramps, all that kind of stuff, it's not in there.
Do you know about how much, like ballpark, how much that would increase the cost if you included all of the exclusions?
I, the ADA one's a tough question, because we, that's something we're gonna have to use an architect to find out in detail. The site stuff, you know, that really depends on, are you just gonna, in essence, scrape everything outside the buildings and go back in and re-lay out all the parking and the curb lines and those things? That'll, that'll, you know, and it's a tricky little site from that perspective. So you would just have to work your way through that as you did it. But that would be where you'd bring that design firm in to work through that with you. And these are just kind of the more specific base breakdowns in the cost detail estimate. Basically, it comes out to, you get your total square footage is nineteen thousand four hundred. The average cost per unit on the rehabilitation is one eighty, and that puts you at two sixty-one a square foot. And that, that, that doesn't include those exclusions. So that's how, that's what that estimate looks like. And this one right here is just an example to show you what the layouts are of the three different units in the square footage that you see, how each of those are laid out out there today.
And then just to help inform council, we were able to find a couple of projects of, you know, what two point eight acres could support in terms of the number of units that are currently in design with cost estimates. Just to give you some comparison, these are new construction affordable projects, so they're a hundred percent affordable, and it's based on cost estimates, but the Geneva Village Rehab at two sixty-one a square foot, Project One at two sixty-nine, and Project Two at two hundred seventeen dollars a square foot. So just to give you some comparison of both total cost. I think the availability for a hundred percent affordable projects to access both tax credit programs or, you know, potentially other grant programs, I think the city's contribution could potentially, you know, if you were looking at those total construction costs, the city's contribution could be a smaller gap funding fill. I think, you know, in talking with South Metro Housing Options, the majority of projects that they're costing out now, the gap is about, you know, anywhere from one point five million to about two million. So just to kind of give you a sense of where the city could make a contribution and realize that type of project.
Biggest discrepancy I've seen between these is the, you know, the cost per square foot are roughly the same. It's the cost per unit, that's because these new ones are a lot bigger per square, per unit. Each unit would be bigger square footage.
Yeah, I was thinking, yeah, I believe that's the case. And I also think that most of those are, you have, there's some supplemental amenities that are coming with some of these developments now that wouldn't have been built in this one.
Yeah.
Whether it's improved common areas or things like that.
And that total square footage represents common areas and other amenities, so that is a portion of the cost as well, yeah.
Why did you use seventy units and ninety-three units? Why didn't you use something closer?
Well, I think we were looking at projects that were on similar sites.
She has an actual two point eight acres.
Two point eight acres, so both of these, yeah, like both of these are projects on similar sized sites.
But there was nothing closer to twenty-eight units? I mean, that's.
No, there really aren't, I guess, at least in my discussions, there weren't really any projects of that scale. I think, you know, the cost per unit really drives more towards utilizing, you know, at a higher density the land that you have available. So I think in both cases, I think it was like two point one and two point seven acres, so very, very similar sites. Turn it over to Tiffany.
And then, so what we wanna present here is a couple of financing options if you choose to go down the revitalization plan. And so we have two here, we have a ten-year bank loan, which we could get, and then we have COPs or Certificates of Participation, which would be at a twenty-year, that's pretty standard for a COP issuance. If you look at kind of the details, you know, a bank loan is really only available up to ten years for a project similar to this. And issuance costs are a little bit less, interest is a little bit higher, just based on the nature of the lender. And so your annual payment would be about five hundred ninety-five thousand a year for a ten-year bank loan. COPs is really where we're looking at, because the city is looking at doing a larger-scale COP issuance, and so you could do this one separate from that, because we would pledge the asset that we're refurbishing. Or you can include it in a larger scale of COPs and maybe drive down some of those costs a little bit. You get a little bit of a, it's about a quarter percent interest change if you go in the larger scale. But it is a twenty-year commitment, and three point eight percent alone, it would be three point seven five, so five basis points, it'd be three point seven five if you included it in a larger-scale COP issuance, and annual payment of about three hundred eighty-six thousand.
Question when you're done with this.
Yeah, and so, you know, some other factors that we consider is state housing funds, looking at some credits there, grants, you know, there could be some grants out there that we could apply for, it takes a little bit longer, more involved, you have to have partners usually, and then, you know, we also have our three-year sales tax capital improvement.
Wait there, I might ask Kathleen to comment. Kathleen's been involved with, just or closer to, some of the statewide housing grants recently, and has some experience or has heard more about the most competitive projects for housing grants? Would you mind just sharing?
Yeah, so we actually, in partnership with South Metro Housing Options and Habitat for Humanity, competed for state grant funds. We didn't, we were not asked to apply, we went through a pre-application process. That project would have been a similar number, I think, probably closer to thirty for sale units is what we thought in redesigning the site, and it would have been some pre-design work. I think a lot of those grants are ARPA-funded, you know, and so it's the accumulation of those ARPA funds and then creating opportunities, so they have very accelerated timeframe now. So as the state looks to provide guidance on the Proposition One, Two, Three that passed in November, I think it will probably be, you know, a year to eighteen months before we have some guidance on how those funds may be available. Most of the ARPA-related funds are gonna be really challenging to access because just our level of readiness is not where it needs to be for meeting the timelines that they have for those.
Free, what do we have left in three A approximately, do you know, the three funds?
We've done, we've done a set aside for affordable housing, so we have nine hundred thousand dollars as part of that.
That's what we have left out of the.
Affordable housing.
Wait, was it ARPA or three A?
ARPA, oh, sorry, three A, sorry.
Or, actually, not three A. No, I'm taking ARPA, not three A, nevermind.
You knew what he was saying, it just, you understood.
I knew what you were asking, right?
Same thing, I was saying it wrong.
So we have the nine hundred thousand, and then we also have an unallocated amount of two hundred and seventy-six thousand.
Okay.
I'm gonna ask you my question here, but you may refer it. So did you calculate that five hundred ninety-five thousand payment per year? If we were to do, how much rent would cover it at the affordable rate, at the sixty percent AMI, eighty percent end-market rate? So how much are we of that would the city need to cover?
So the, so the way that we've calculated and the way that we're showing reasonable rents is, or responsible rents, is assuming that the project itself and the future rents will pay for the five hundred ninety-five thousand annual payment. There was no subsidy from the city, because you have to guarantee your revenue income when you issue a bank loan.
And is that at one of the AMIs, affordable?
That's at cost recovery, is what I would call that, cost recovery.
But at what rate? It's, I'm trying to figure out if it's market rate.
It's four percent, so. You'll see in a couple of slides, the rent that would be required to pay the debt service shown on this slide.
Okay, sorry.
I just had a question or question or comment about the other potential factors. Those aren't necessarily factors, at least the first two maybe, for debt financing, but, you know, one option with, I guess, the IHO, IHO funds, three A funds is potentially not going out to debt and just going into the general fund or going to three A and just paying all upfront rather than doing other things with those funds, which would be an option, I don't see you recommending that, but I just wanted to know.
An option.
Yeah, and I think based on what we have in the pipeline for the, with the new Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, it probably would be sort of in a three- or four-year timeline, potentially, where we might have funds that.
But that would restrict any other activity for affordable.
We just wanna be, be upfront with the council about, these are options. If, you know, council wanted to, you know, buy down some of the debt or do some of those things, these are options. We'll circle back to that, to those, those options in a minute, in a little more detail.
It just seems like those are more dramatic options and aren't necessarily explicit.
I have one question for Keith. So back to the construction costs, those are today's prices, you didn't inflate those to?
No, the.
Because we're talking two or three years away regardless of.
Yeah, the five billion number that you see was based on pricing in December of this year, or this past year.
Should have done it back in twenty years ago, it was four hundred and eighty.
I know.
That was, that was, that was seven years ago.
Was it just seven years ago?
For like twenty years ago.
We didn't do that estimate, sorry.
We know what Patrick's saying.
Yeah, we know what he's saying.
You guys just have to read me today.
Five years.
I'm thinking clear of six million.
Okay, I think we're good.
All right, so I mentioned responsible rent, and so if council wants to continue the course of refurbishing the property, you know, we have to have revenues come in to help fund those annual debt service payments. And so we wanted to kind of show what that might look like, considering the five million plus closing costs and a couple of other factors. You know, we kind of broke it up into debt service payment, operating costs, because you still have to manage properties, still have to pay utilities, do certain repairs along the way, even though we won't refurb it. And then, you know, implementing a capital reserve, so that after twenty years, once the debt is paid off, we have accumulated some funds that we can continue maintaining that piece of property. And so when you look at this in total, you know, we're estimating about sixteen hundred, sixteen hundred eighty-two dollars per unit a month, taking into account all of the five million dollars operating costs, all of that.
That's average across the studio one and two, so.
And we have it broken up, we have a slide that'll show you the different, different rates as well. And, is this me?
Yes.
So the Geneva. Uh, so the Geneva Village Fund, you know, we wanted to just uh, kind of give you a little bit of history of uh, the discussions of the transfers in and out to the fund itself. And so we included a history here of when uh, the decision was made in two thousand and nine. And shows the funds, a negative means funds were coming out of Geneva Village into the general fund. A positive means the funds were coming from general fund back into the Geneva Village Fund. Uh, so we did wanna show an accumulation of what that amounts to. And you see the net of those uh, changes over the uh, last uh, twenty or so years. Is uh, two hundred fifty-four thousand um, negative, which means uh. The general fund has not given an additional two hundred fifty-four thousand back to Geneva Village Fund.
That doesn't take, does it just take into consideration maintenance?
It it does not.
When we did the uh, what was it, the sewer line or something?
Yes, that would be included because in two thousand and nine, we established a fund policy, fund balance policy or cash policy for the fund. And we wanted to maintain a ninety-eight thousand dollar reserve in that fund, uh, it's a three thousand per unit. And so what we would do is we would assess the fund at the end of every year, if it was above that, we wouldn't transfer, if it was below that, we would transfer back to the general fund. To maintain that ninety-eight thousand um, uh, reserve. So yes, if there were repairs made and there weren't enough cash at the end of the year, we would have transferred some.
From.
But if there was enough after that, it's still, yeah, I see what you're saying.
The positive numbers there were transfers to.
Right, yeah, after maintenance.
Potentially.
Were needed for pro, you know.
To maintain the ninety-eight thousand.
Or they to cover it, yeah.
So taking that into consideration and understanding that, uh, you know, there is a variance of two hundred fifty-four thousand. So what we wanted to do is kind of show, you know, um, the city would make a payment of two hundred fifty-four thousand. To uh, essentially get that back to the fund, uh, which would reduce the average rent on the refurb project. So we talked about sixteen hundred eighty-two dollars per unit, the city would uh, provide two hundred fifty-four thousand. Which would bring that down to about sixteen twenty-six.
So we would essentially contribute two hundred fifty-four cash. So that the amount borrowed would be less, so then the debt service could be less and the rents could be a little less.
Tiffany, was there ever an agreement between the city and Geneva Village that we were gonna create this fund and that that fund had to go strictly to? Uh, you know, repairs and the maintenance of Geneva Village, or was that just a, hey, we know we're gonna need to put some work into this project. Let's put some money aside, so we have it sitting there when we're ready to do some work to it.
Yeah, and we, and we weren't really setting aside, I mean, the premise of the Geneva Village Fund is rents come in and expenditures go out. And that's, the rents are to cover the expenditures, we ran into some issues where we didn't have enough money to make some of the repairs. Um, so we did have to put some money in after the initial transfer, but it was a, it was a policy, policy decision. Um, to do that, but um, you know, theoretically, you wanna have your rents higher than your expenditures. So that you can maintain those capital expenditures that are coming down the, down the pipe.
How different is this fund compared to Capital Projects Fund or any other funds that the city has different?
Yeah, so so Geneva Village is essentially like a proprietary fund or an enterprise fund. And so the premise behind it is that uh, you're charging for a service and you're providing, uh, you're providing that service. So there, you're charging for rent or lease payments and you're providing maintenance of the, of the um, property to cover that. So it's, it's like a rent landlord um, situation, and so you want the rents to cover the expenditures.
But funds are, the city transfers back and forth between funds all the time, between the, the general fund and the capital projects.
Yes, yes. Yeah.
Okay, we wanted to also acknowledge last April, um, you received a ten-year plan from residents that called for an increase in rent. By six percent each year, um, which over that ten years accumulated about two million dollars. And it, the plan did assume that their twenty current residents at the time would continue. Um, and eight new residents would be um, sought through, you know, uh. Uh, various means to make sure that they qualified with the age restrictions. It also proposed a four-member Geneva Village Community Board, um, three elected representatives per, by the residents. And then one city council representative, and that board would then assume all of the management responsibilities for Geneva Village. And from that two million dollars, about fifty percent of yearly income would be set aside for capital improvements.
When you say all management responsibilities, this board would be charged with finding a, a property manager?
Yeah, so that, that is how the resident proposal reads, and so I think that that's an opportunity as we, as we go back and have other conversations. With the community there to understand, you know, the sort of ins and outs of that proposal. But um, it is communicated that it would be all management responsibilities, yes. So the rents after rehabilitation, um, you know, we wanted to compare those against uh, sixty percent. Of average median income rents, uh, the residential, or the resident proposal. And then how that compares to studio, or I'm sorry, to current rent. And we wanted to look at uh, each of the unit types, so studio, one-bedroom and two-bedroom. I think the mayor's corrected some of our math here with um, the, the rents for the resident proposal. That they might be a little bit lower than we're showing here.
Proposal, the studio, what they're proposing is five thirty-nine. One-bedroom is seven oh-two and the two-bedroom is eight oh-eight, so that chart doesn't look like it's accurate.
So we can get that corrected, um, and, and share that back out with council.
Kathleen, can I?
Yes.
Interject real quick, um, Kelly, you may also know this too from your SMHO work. But do we know what SMHO's comparable rental rates are for studio, one-bed, two-beds? If we, if a resident were to go through them?
Yeah, so the, the rents for sixty percent of average median income are actually prescribed by um, both CHAF and HUD. So, so those are um, income limits and maximum rents, and they're factored by county. So it shows a varying degrees of average median income, so um, SMHO has everything from like thirty percent. Of average median income up to sixty percent, so rents are adjusted based on that, but they're set annually through that HUD process.
As, so it seems like a sixty percent AMI would be comparable to what the higher, I guess, the. Uh, more, I don't know, the more expensive potential option would be going through SMHO. But could theoretically be lower.
Yeah, cause I think thirty percent rent for a studio is set at, uh, or thirty percent of average median income. That rent would be six hundred eighteen dollars. Um, and then one-bedroom at six six three, six hundred sixty-three dollars, and a two-bedroom at seven hundred ninety-five.
You can charge lower, you just can't charge more.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, I just wanted to have something comparable to what SMHO is currently doing.
And so I, I think they've got, they've got a mix of incomes in their current project with the overlook, for example, so they do have units at um, thirty percent.
These current ones are more, I would say, ten, five percent.
Oh, yeah. Um, I, I did wanna address the question about the eight fifty-seven, eleven fifteen and the twelve eighty-five, um, from the resident proposal. So what I actually did is I took, uh, the proposal, kept some residents at the current rate or a lower rate. And then increased the ra, the rate of the new residents that would come in, and I combined the two together. To show the eight fifty-seven, the eleven fifteen and the twelve.
Okay.
So if I look at um, information, uh, like a studio, current community recommendation was three eighteen. And a, a new tenant was five thirty-nine, so I combined the two to make the eight fifty-seven, if that makes sense.
Close enough. That'd be a lot higher still though, even if you average it, you're still having a few people paying that, that eight hundred and a lot more people paying even less.
Well, you'd have fewer people paying less than the newer people.
Well, the newer people, there's more, what, fifty-fifty right now with the units?
Not quite fifty-fifty.
The number of units.
And even with that higher rent, I'm, I'm just looking at the rent limits now, it, it would still be less than forty-five percent of the average.
But and was the, so the new person rent, was that also going to increase by six percent every year percent?
Yes, that was the recommendation, and this is just a snapshot, this is just the first year, it's not the incremental.
And that would also depend on your loan, cause you get a CHAF loan and it's restricted, you can't necessarily keep increasing it right beyond the limit.
Right, the CHAF loan, yeah.
Right.
I think a takeaway here though is with the gray line, which would be the rent that we'd need to cover that debt service. And the operating costs and the capital reserve um, is higher, I think it would threaten the affordability of the units.
I think you could do a shift, a paradigm shift and say. It could be responsible rate, market rate there. That's an option.
And I think what's missing in here though is the average of those rents in Littleton for each of those.
Much higher. Much higher.
Actually, I think they're lower.
Average rent in Littleton?
No, for, for, uh, yeah, because we had that study session back in, that study session on the IHO. And you had very different numbers for, cause they were much lower than I thought for studios and one-bedrooms, when you looked at the average. Not the, of the market rate, but when you were looking at all of those, the older properties, the aging properties, they're actually lower.
That is possible.
Did, uh, South Metro Housing end up going out to and interviewing the residents and figure out AMI? Those, those residents, I thought?
No, when they were managing the property.
This is our, no, that's part of our, our.
After our last study session, we, we, I thought we had agreed that South Metro Housing was gonna go out there and have a conversation with them.
They, they would no longer manage, they stopped managing the property in twenty eighteen.
We're gonna pay them to do that, to go out there and have a conversation with the residents to just figure out. Average median, am I, am I the only one that?
No, you're not.
Making that up?
Yeah, um, so they, it's actually, just to, just to clarify, there was, uh, yeah, there were. They've identified someone that could support us in doing that.
That's, that's, I'm me, I've misinterpreted some of what came out of that study session by video.
That study session was in the previous ministry.
Like a new guy card.
Need the video replay? Regardless, it's gonna happen.
Yes. So we've mentioned a, a few slides ago that it would be possible if the council wanted to go down this road to use some other city funding. Um, to, you know, to contribute, buy down the debt, um, you know, there are a number of ways that could be, be viewed. To kind of help the impact uh, on, on rents. Um, you know, we do wanna just kind of bring it back to the, the big picture for the city, uh, financial context here and just. Couple of, of staff advisory points here. We do think that it's, would be best if the cost to rehab the units could be contained within the overall financial model for, for Geneva Village. Um, meaning mostly that, you know, we wouldn't want necessarily to contribute general fund. Um, because, you know, as is our fundamental policy around general fund. Those funds should be, be prioritized for benefits to the community at large or large service areas such as police. Public works, those services, uh. You know, also, I think, you know, this, those costs, the rehab costs could be eligible, would be eligible for measure. Three A sales tax revenues if council wanted to go down that road. And, you know, again, sta, staff's recommendation would be that the first priority for measure three A funds. Would be some of those citywide uh, benefit projects. Um, you know, we have, we have roads, we have all medians, all those other projects, plus some of those facility projects. Uh, we're talking about some downtown projects, um, that would have more, you know, broad benefit. Than um, even if, if all the units at uh, Geneva Village were full. Um, and then finally, the council could also think about using some of the in, inclusionary housing ordinance fees in lieu. That might be coming down the road, um, that developers could choose to contribute as an alternative to building affordable housing. Um, however, you know, those fees, we don't know when those are coming, with, that could be two years, three years, four years. Before we actually start seeing those revenues come in, um, in significant amount that they could really make an impact on a project like that. Additionally, the council conversation so far about those fees in lieu are that we might use those. To um, leverage the SMHO, um, you know, pu, public funding, those tax credit po, projects. That could get more housing built, um, for more bang, housing bang for the city's buck. So um, those are all sources.
We, we keep saying uh, SMHO, that we, we gotta let people know that is the housing authority.
Right, South Metro Housing Authority is our housing authority. Um, and then finally, we, we feel, you know, that uh, managing property, some cities do it. Uh, larger cities that might uh, more typically do it, um, but we don't think that uh, managing property. With, with tenants like this is necessarily in the, the city's wheelhouse, and it probably shouldn't be something that we do long-term. Uh, we have talked with uh, our housing authority, South Metro Housing Options, um, about this. And, you know, if the project, if the rent, if the rents and the property were set up, um, in line with their. Structures, they would be willing to take this property back if the city uh, decided to, to go down. This road to rehab those, those units.
Situation where we would basically say, here, South Metro Housing, you now own this, or would we sell to them, or would we?
I think our first thought is that we would probably still own the property, um, but they would be our, our agent as they were for many years. Uh, to manage.
Were they having interest in buying the project?
Potentially, that's a conversation we could have.
Jim, can I ask you a quick question on the financing too? That five, and maybe that's also a Keith question as well, that five million, um, is just the contractor estimate in terms of time, labor, materials on the contractor side? Do we know what the city expenditure would be in order to manage a project kind of up this size and scale? If, if, say for example, it were to be rehabilitated all at once?
Um, if we were gonna let that job, we would generally try and let it as CMGC, Construction Manager, General Contractor together. In that combination so that moves a little more of that owner representation onto the, the contractor versus us. Um, you know, uh, if we tried to do this, like this project in addition to say. You know, building two or three at the same time, we, we, we wouldn't be able to do that, uh, cause that facilities are pretty small. But, you know, we could, we can manage it, it's possible.
I, I would say, given all the three A projects coming forward, one of the potential possibilities is hiring an owner's rep. Which would be additional money, so generally kind of a percentage base, but nothing super extravagant. But it's certainly, uh, you know, it's gonna be the cost of an FTE to manage that project.
And that cost that you shared, that's to do the property all at once, not in phases?
Yeah, I mean, you could certainly do it, you could certainly do it in phases, you know, obviously it would take longer, I think it would cost more. It would cause more disruption, um, and then one of the other, the challenges is, um, you know, you, you would really struggle. You can't really do a unit by unit, you're gonna have to do building by building. And um, you're not, our current residents are not, you know, they're parsed out around the property, so it's not quite like that. So you'd still have, you'd still have displacements and those kind of things.
Mobilization, as you know, Jerry, is probably a, a big part of some of these contracts. So when you have them on scene, you want them to kind of do everything they can.
Well, I guess my thought is even if that five million, that's, that's really a lower number, it's gonna end up costing anyway.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, I think we, we'd still wanna bring in a design firm to help to make sure that we're, you know, we've got the stuff covered. We want to, we address the ADA stuff if we wanna do that, um, to make sure we, we do all of that. Um, and work in partnership, I, you know, I, my preference would be to have that CMGC at the same time as the, um, the design firm. Working in parallel together, um, for efficiency, but um, yeah, I would, I would think, you know, in a normal project. We generally assume about ten percent of total construction cost is what you look at for design.
Just, I just wanna not play devil's advocate here, but some of the things that for the estimate that included like appliances and finishes. You know, I do just wanna acknowledge that not all the units necessarily, you know, need to have that done right now. Cause they're, they're functional units, I'm sure they, like, you know, my house that was built in nineteen sixty, that's got the same similar issues. But soon as you get into one, you know, that may need some renovation, then you kind of, it's a, a ball rolling downhill, so.
Yeah, and that kind of goes to the bill, the building itself question versus unit by unit, because you're gonna, one of the things you'll have to do here. Is you're gonna have to take out your drywall and your flooring under the abatement, which then leads to you having to do adjustments and plumbing and all that other stuff, so. And they're all kind of tied together across the building, so that would be one of the challenges. And they're all kind of tied together across the building, so that would be one of the challenges there.
I just wanted to.
No, I, I absolutely understand that. I, I mean, on the other hand, we, we had an incident recently where we had a unit became vacated, and then, um, we had a pipe freeze in the unit. And, and it cost us basically thirty-eight thousand dollars to take the carpet out, because it became an abatement scenario. Um, so, you know, if you have those kind of things, you're just get sucked, you know, it kind of sucks you into other things, as you know, from a, just a remodeling kind of standpoint, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I agree with you that there's, you know, some units where that's the case.
That, that, that's not necessary, like, you need to do it, or, or you, I mean, if we needed to do it, people wouldn't be living in that unit, but it's just, you know, there is that.
At thirty-eight thousand, you gotta, you're lucky you got up thirty-eight, I, I'm doing one now, it's costing over almost two hundred thousand.
I don't disagree with you on that, that's what Jerry.
I, I think I, uh, uh, am I correct in saying that, that the current rent they're paying includes utilities?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, did that new payment that you showed us, potential new payment, was that just for the mortgage payment, or was that including utilities?
It's still included utilities.
Okay.
What, and what are the actual, I mean, we just talked about utilities not too long ago, you know?
Right.
I know that, none of those rents cover my utility bill, so, I mean, what is, what is the actual utility bill from there? I mean, assuming it's more than.
Got to be huge.
It's gone up a little bit, even though Excel told us it was only six percent when they were here.
Three percent.
Three percent, sorry.
Yeah, I mean.
Gone up seventy-five percent.
If you look at electricity and gas over the last five years, it averages about twenty-one thousand a year in total for the, for every, uh.
Twenty-one thousand, so.
And common space, so that's electric and gas.
Thousand a year roughly, a little bit.
Right now, you have a recent bill?
Um.
Was that, was that last year, or was that, I mean?
No, that's twenty seventeen through twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, that's different.
Twenty twenty-two was about twenty-five thousand, um, so, yes.
For sixteen, so units.
And that is included in the rent, so there's no.
Correct.
And that water, water would be on top of that, too.
Yeah, so water and sewer is an additional, uh, twenty thousand roughly.
If I'm, jump in the gun, tell me, if you remodel, let's say hypothetically remodel building by building, and since the residents are, are scattered throughout, is it possible to have residents move to the building that's not being remodeled, not everybody would have to move, only some?
To me, that goes to the question that, like, Kathleen's been on about a people-first approach to doing it, and, you know, we haven't logistically sat down, and that's something you'd have to work on individually with each of the tenants and, and go through that process to see if that was even feasible for them to do that, um, but it's, it's all possible, potentially.
I mean, the flip side of that is you have people living in a construction zone that may not be high quality of life.
And, and that maybe would be part of the interview process to see what people's tolerance was for.
And we, and as we just talked about, we, we have, uh, the, the costs could grow from that staging and that mobilizing.
Is, is that a?
If we did it over time.
Is that a s- six-month project, a year project, I think? What, if you were to redo all these units?
If they, if you decide it was totally vacant?
Oh, okay.
My experience would, I mean, based on, I mean, Jerry, you can comment on this as well, because you're in this kind of market, I, so I, I feel like this is at least a ten-month project.
Easily.
You know?
What if it wasn't vacant?
Oh, you're, you're looking at two years.
So, I would ask if there are more questions at this point about the construction, the rehab path, because we're shifting now to the redevelop property path.
Can you go back to that, that's the cost slide? I think it's a hundred and eighty thousand for, per unit. One thing I'm not sure we've talked about is, you know, a gap that we have is for seniors looking for a place to move out of their houses, like, at a hundred and eighty thousand, like, have we considered making these for sale? If they were renovated, wouldn't that pay for the cost?
Did you say make them for sale? I think it's the same thing.
This is working, huh?
Um, that's another option.
Well, I'm just, i- if preserving it is important to our community, and we know one of our gaps in our housing strategy is a place for aging seniors in their homes to go who wanna downsize to a very supportive space. I mean, the ADA thing might, well, could be potentially tricky there, but have we talked about that at all? Because we know with, like, community trust and things like that, we could keep them, maintain them at that, at that level of purchase, hundred and eighty or whatever that might be.
I don't know how, you know, there would have to be a lot of titling, title, you know, uh, you got twenty-eight units like that. I think it's all in one parcel, I assume. Um, if you're gonna sell individual units to whomever, you know, there's gonna be a lot of.
Habitat for Humanity does that.
It's kind of deed restricted, right?
They will, uh, so the land is all held in land trust.
Okay.
And then you're, you're purchasing the structure, so. And, and there, we do have some experience of that with the scattered sites that have been moved to for sale through South Metro Housing Options. And I think we have a couple of projects that are in, you know, sort of various stages of pre-application or application, um, that would do something similar. So, put the land in trust, it would be permanently deeded, affordable. And then, um, that for sale, there's a, a number of factors that maintain your eligibility through that. Um, and, and a process to go through, and then Habitat's been, um, providing the mortgage lending piece of that as well. So, they have a lot of mechanisms in place to support, uh, both first time and, uh, mostly first time homeowners.
So, the thought would be get the units up to speed, and then, and then sell.
Have a timeframe.
That would be the, the ultimate, the end goal. The Housing Authority has done that, too, the houses, there's some houses up on RIS.
Yeah.
They've done that, and it's, uh, has a, it's encumbered by some stuff.
Yeah, that's what she.
I was gonna ask, Reed, but can the city just can't say we're selling property? Can it s- say that, or is it a charter thing where we have to go through citizens?
Uh, for city properties, this specific one, I believe the city could just sell it without voter approval. It's not designated as a park or open space, which would allow, which would require.
Because it's an enterprise.
Yeah, theoretically.
Fun, but is the zoning, is it residential, or is it? Is that to do with the zoning of the parcel?
It has to do with how the property was dedicated, so we couldn't sell the, the lake out back. Um, that would not, I mean, we could, it just, that would require voter approval, but not this particular person.
If we did look at selling, is there ways to help make it affordable? In other words, CHAF may not be the option, but is the, the Habitat for Humanity, or is there funds available to offset the cost? Because if the unit was a hundred and eighty thousand, which is reasonable in the market, but maybe beyond the sixty or eighty percent AMI, is there funds available?
This is way below A, AMI.
Yeah, this is, I mean.
This is at like, I don't know, what would that chart be?
So, at least it would.
But, and can we make it specific to seniors, or is there limitations? I mean, can land trust do that, say, these are for sale, they need to only be fifty-five and above, or?
I think we, we could explore that, right, like, um, what those provisions look like. Um, I'm trying to think if, I'm not sure what average median income the current land trust may have been defined as for both the scattered sites and some of the, the projects that are in process with us through Habitat for Humanity, but we could look and see, um, if there is both a component of age restriction and, and income restriction as well.
I also think one of the pieces of this, when it comes back, is the appeal. Seniors look for first-floor masters, you know, one-level housing, which is so hard to find in Littleton. At whatever rate it is, at whatever AMI it is, is this place appealing enough without all the fancy amenities like, uh, laundry in the units and things like that? In other words, if it, as an option to sell without going into a lot of debt, would this be desirable and could we sell that? I don't know. A- and what, at bre- price, I mean, a hundred and eighty thousand is a good price, maybe, I, I don't know.
You can't buy anything.
Trust me, I've looked.
But, we may not be able to sell over a hundred and eighty, so whether it's two hundred, or whatever, uh, uh, proposed price, would people buy it? I don't know.
I mean, it's brutalism.
We can speculate.
It's brutalism, so it's a lot of concrete.
Yeah, I mean, you.
And are you?
And, and keep in mind, this hundred and eighty thousand covers the cost of the rehabilitation. We still, you know, it is still an estimate, not factored for inflation, so.
Well, and I don't know, I, I can't speak for other council members, but I don't know that we're looking to make a profit on this. We're just looking to make it, if we were to renovate it, to be sustainable, that it doesn't, um, that we don't have to put a, take a lot of money out of the general fund. I mean, what other council members think, but I, I, I don't think this is a profit-making.
How would that, if we did a, that financing, how would that work to, or you could pay it off over, give it six months, twelve months to sell everything, or how's that?
Well, you're kind of, you're kind of limited if you issue a COP.
Get that income coming in over.
Yeah, once you issue a COP, you're locked in for a minimum of ten years on a twenty-year note. Uh, you don't have the option to prepay or pay it off. Um, a bank loan would be a little different, but it does cost more and has a shorter, you know, ten-year span. Those you typically can pay off pretty much at any time.
If you did sell the property, if we did, if we decided to sell the property?
Sell, sell the property or sell each unit? She's talking about selling each unit individually. That's the next conversation.
Oh, okay, I'm jumping ahead.
So, she's talked, her, she's suggested selling each, as, as, I will say as is, but as renovated.
But when we think of models for cottage courts, right, they have very strong community-like boards. One thing I liked in the resident proposal was, we're gonna establish a board that governs it. I like that idea of keeping the integrity of, of this area.
It's a sexual homeowners association.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you started looking at the cost of rehab of one of these units, you're be- almost better off knocking it down and starting from scratch.
Except for one thing we haven't, is nowhere in this, is the historic piece of it.
There's nothing historic about it.
I've just been waiting.
There's nothing historic about it.
What, it is, it's six, sixty.
Over sixty years old, right?
And it is Sternberg, who is a very important architect, and that's one of the criterias for designation. And I think when we come back, we, and look at these various alternatives that we've mentioned here, I think we need to look at the historic piece. It's the gateway to our community, and it's open space, and, you know, there's differences of opinion, but if you go back to the efficient character is about density and height and open space, and here's this beautiful property that is not limited to the Geneva Village residents, it's for the whole city to use. And I think it would be a shame to not consider that as an important component of our evaluation.
Is it true you could knock down historic, a building, and put up a plaque and say this was Geneva Village?
It's, it's not designated as.
It's not designated.
I know, but I'm just saying.
But that is, but it qualifies next year, it, it'll be at sixty years, so, we're close, um.
It qualifies now.
No, please, keep it in.
Is it, um, identified as significant, what does that mean, from an HBD perspective?
I would, after, I was gonna suggest something at the end of all this to. Yeah, 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 you be quiet. About having HBD have some feedback.
Okay.
Fine.
So, move on. Yeah, so can we just move on with the presentation here?
Do you have anything else you wanted to add?
Don't ask Kelly.
That transition.
I'm not saying anything.
Be clear about that.
Yeah, so, as we think about redeveloping the property, um, and the potential of that, and facilitating council's discussion, I think we wanna make sure that, um, it's very clear that we want to have a people-first strategy. Um, regardless of, of the decision, there may be the, um, need to relocate, so I think that there are a couple of factors that, that we've identified. Um, you know, part of the opportunity with either relocation or redeveloping, uh, or the permanent relocation and redeveloping of the site is that there is a, a growing vision for, um, potentially an opportunity to kind of think through the vision of the city property, so encompassing all of the site, as well as plans for downtown, we're about to kick off our downtown mobility str- and streetscape improvement plan. This is, you know, identified as the northern gateway, um, which I think has come up in conversation already. The potential to increase housing quality, um, for Geneva Village residents. Another factor is, uh, increasing affordability, housing stock in, in Littleton. Uh, the two-point-eight site, or two-point-eight acre site, probably could support between seventy-five and a hundred and twenty-five units. Um, and then we also know that as we think about that northern gateway, there is an opportunity to think about how this site interacts with and activates that Prince Street gateway and, and the corridor as it comes into downtown. So, we think there are probably three steps that we would need to go through. Um, obviously, um, a component of assessing each of the households and, and counseling for them to, to go through uh, the first initial stage of understanding each of the, the fourteen households that are there. Um, it could then also involve relocation plans, you know, so a very specific plan that would be household by household. Um, and then, you know, we had talked in April about the opportunity to work with someone like Urban Land Institute or other organizations that have, like, technical advisory panels, where they bring a team of experts that could reflect on the opportunity with the site, how it fits into some of your other city planning, the new land use code, um, the downtown mobility and streetscapes plan, and sort of blending all of those things together and could reflect on what that northern gateway could look like for you. I think that visioning could be inclusive of the site, or could stretch across Prince Street and think more of that, uh, larger gateway piece. So, there's, there's some option, uh, options there as well. So, I think that the expertise and, and, Councilmember just really, you're exactly right, um, we did work with South Metro Housing Options to identify the expertise that we might need, be connected as a consultant, they worked with on the, um, scattered sites that they have here in the city, and so what, what we like about that particular consultant is that they kind of bring a, a nexus of social work and expertise in, in housing. Um, so, really, um, an, an opportunity to work very closely with residents and understand their needs and what that household assessment is, and then, um, hopefully, a, a real clear understanding of housing options and housing policies and, and ways to work what can be a complicated system for, for many residents. So, I think that just ease of figuring out what options may be. So, phase one, um, of that work could include one-on-one interviews with households, so we could look at income verification. Um, obviously, we would keep confidential the pieces related to, um, that household, um, and really have a, a more in-depth conversation about what the needs are, um, particularly because, you know, the property has been focused on seniors and what, um, those needs may be. And then really kind of create an assessment that could come back in the form of a report, um, to council as additional understanding of, of each of the fourteen households there. So, that, uh, cost has been identified at about a thousand dollars a unit to do that work. Uh, we do have some costing on, on the future steps, if council would, um, want to consider, uh, each of those four steps. Um, roughly the, the cost overall for, um, assisting, and then if council were to make the decision of some sort of subsidy, um, to offset future rents for those residents, um, you know, that, that could be something that council could consider as well. The total cost for, uh, our work with Be Connected is, is roughly at that seventy-two thousand dollars, just over seventy-two thousand dollars. So, I'll turn it back over to Jim.
Would that come out of the fund, the Geneva Fund, or totally separate?
I think that would be, you know, something that council could provide direction on. Apparently, I'm the wrong kind of social worker, being a social worker consultant. That's where it's at.
So, I, I was gonna ask on that cost, was that for what grade?
Um, the seventy-two thousand? So, it would be, um, probably, if we were to go through all of those phases, um, roughly a six-month process. And then if council were to decide on any sort of subsidy for rent, you could decide to do that, you know, for a year or multiple years. Um, but I, I think this would be inclusive of covering the, the seventy-two thousand would be the consultation, a full relocation plan, the actual relocation and moving, and then include sort of a year check-in. We know that the, the first year of a move is the most challenging to sort of stabilize within circumstances. So, we do a monthly check-in as part of our agreement with Be Connected to make sure that, that people are feeling good and confident about the move that they've just made.
But that, that covers a six-month period, though, so.
Well, I don't, I think, I wanted to clear it, it, you're not saying in six months, this will be done. That's, it's not, that's.
Right, that's a six-month period is what you're covering there.
Yeah.
That would be subject of, kind of, future, future discussion. I thi- think there are, there would be some trade-offs to think about in, in, in terms of that timeframe that that process takes.
I mean, that whole process is gonna take probably, would take two or three years, because counseling is gonna take months, you got, if, if there's relocation, that's gonna take quite a while, so that's, that's.
Kathy, Kathleen, can I ask to, again, to bring this back to some sort of grounding and best practice, like what a SMHO would be doing currently? Is that something typical for a resident looking, seeking, um, housing through SMHO? Is that something typical for a resident looking, seeking um housing through S M H O? To go through the credit verification process, the income verification process, all that background check information? That that would be comparable to what S M H O would do for a new resident?
So that would be all through your application process? Yeah.
But first you gotta get on the waiting list. And 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 I've advised people to do that for years, so hopefully they all did that. Co- uh cause they even the the House of Authority doesn't verify their their um whether or not that they uh need the criti- qualify, I think, whether or not they qualify income wise or not, but likely they do. But they don't verify that until they finally get a unit for them, so and that could take years.
I don't think there's a waiting list though right now for most of the properties.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Good. They should be going there now. They actually have, if there's no waiting list, I'd go there now.
Hey Kathleen, I have a question.
Yes.
And this is just, I don't know, it says number of units fourteen, first steps two, three, one, two, and four, and the location says type, okay.
Sorry about that.
Where did the sixteen come from?
Thanks for finding that.
In the public.
We're missing something.
So the House of Authority doesn't have a waiting list right now?
I think it depends on the um the property.
Oh, that man, I'd advise people to go check that out.
So uh we're in a a s- a study session format. And um so, you know, we're, we typically don't take public comment, of course. And we know that this subject is significant enough and impactful on the residents there that, you know, we believe staff re- recommends that we 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 should create some process for a little dialogue with residents and then to ultimately have the have the residents have the opportunity to be heard by the council prior to the final decision on on direction. And I'll just say, as I've, you know, kind of gotten know some of the residents uh toured uh recently. Um you know, it's it certainly is impressive, might not be the right term phrase there, but um of how important it is that there is that that time. Um so what we're recommending tonight is that this study session be an opportunity. We've shared updated information and some process. We'd like the opportunity to get out and meet with the residents, you know, invite the residents to a meeting. Hopefully have that meeting not at this building, but perhaps in a comfortable place at their their community room. Um to have that that conversation, be able to to walk through a lot of this uh this information again, answer questions, potentially have that uh be connected. You know, the the process consultant with us for that process. Um so have that meeting and then go to work on those assessments uh with the the current residents. Hopefully take, you know, one or two months for that. We don't know exactly how long that would take. Um but then bring that information back to the council um and schedule that on a regular meeting as a general business item where we would, you know, pro- provide that new information, probably a very brief recap of these options. And then um, you know, encourage council to 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 take some action after hearing from the public. Uh give some final direction um for this this project.
So it's two things I would wanna either add or change about this. One, to go back to Pam's comment, and I think what Kelly was trying to say when I cut her off. Which time, I think it was the second time, maybe it was the first time. Uh you know, the historic aspect of it, you know, we've hea- heard opinions on on, you know, on both sides. I think I would love to hear uh H P B historic uh um board. H P, yeah, historic preservation board. Kind of discuss it and see what they have to say uh on this, because, you know, yes, it's old, there is historic value, but you know, just because it's old and has historic value, is it? How, where does that weigh with with things?
Work with economy.
Is that what you were kinda getting at? Yeah.
Do you wanna see that in a presentation from them or a memo?
I won't, what was that?
A memo would work.
I mean, when you look at the.
How about another study session with them and they can present it for?
Pretty darn basic. What's that?
Would they be able to do that, Pam?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I perhaps, yeah.
No doubt, if we ask them, they will.
So and then, I mean, the other thing is, I think, you know, with that, the second bullet point that this is complete the resident engagement, that looked like it was what, step one of the previous slide there? Um I think I that would, I think that's the direction. I think council kind of thought that was some direction from back in April, so I think that's definitely uh Jim and I weren't there at that meeting, so you know.
Faults on me clarifying.
But the other other thing I was gonna say is, you have ninety days. How much quicker, that's, I mean, three months away, that seems if we could figure out how to, I just, I don't wanna keep kicking the can on.
We're hoping to under promise, over deliver. I mean, to, sorry, to do fourteen interviews, I would think you can do that in a day or two. I mean, I'd just be.
Backgrounds.
Seven a day.
I mean, it's, yeah.
Cost of that social worker, yes. You better be able to do that. We do not make that much money.
Gretchen made, did you resign? So is is council, everyone clear on the direction for at least having, moving forward with that engagement of getting?
Was clear seven months ago.
Yes, I.
I'm sorry, are you asking a question? Do we agree with you?
Do we agree to move forward with that?
Absolutely.
Yes, and if possible, I would love to be there at that resident meeting. Um and if I can't be, I I I would hope someone else from our council could be there just to show support and.
Would that be a little bit?
Not the engage, not the.
No, not with, not with engagement. But just with the the high level like community meeting, yeah.
And.
I don't wanna be too intrusive.
I have, one more thing, but go ahead.
Uh you have nothing? Oh, wait, you're done.
Well, I was gonna say, one other thing to add is, um you know, as we talk about, you know, people first and community, you know, I know the the residents there are front and center, but at the same time, we answer to forty seven thousand people too, so I would love to have more community engagement, broader community engagement rather than just focused on just the, I wanna definitely hear um from them, give them a chance. But what what does, what does the rest, I mean?
Bet you South Park or South Platte Independent might be able to help us out with getting people.
The Littleton Independent, is that what you're trying to say?
Well, it used to be Littleton. I bet you they could help us get some notifications out there and get some input.
But yeah. Yeah, I'm sure they could, the city could as well, but yeah.
It's not a monumental task, it'd be easy.
Based on this discussion, when is appropriate to give directions to staff to look at some of the other options we came up with today? It's like selling and the appeal of selling at some reasonable price. When could that happen? I it it seems like it's either redevelop or um keep it as is and rehabilitate. But I think there's other options like to sell or to look at affordable at different rates or market rate, I mean.
Or do a little bit of all.
Yeah, or a mixture.
But I think.
I'm not interested in any market rate.
I am interested in market rate old, over um scraping.
Well, I think so, I I think the idea was to come back at a regular meeting where there's public comment. I'm sure there'll be public comment, you know, in those ninety to sixty or forty five days before that next meeting. And have us have a discussion um with an agenda item on, I think, you know, it's the two things, we, you know, continue with as the structure is right now, whether that's renovate and rent, renovate and sell, other different things versus, you know, the move on from the 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 current.
Okay, clear. So at at the meeting, we get, at that regular meeting, we'll get feedback, I get that part. But when will we get these other options that came up?
I think at that meeting, we can discuss that, and I think.
But then we can give direction to do, to expand options or give more information in H P B's.
Correct, to, and the idea was, I think it would be a resolution to direct staff to move in this direction and then bring us more information on whichever direction.
I I don't know that I would, depending on what's in, I don't feel that we have enough information.
I think there could be more information in that, in the packet of that meeting.
We could come back, I think, we can start to vet that third option, the uh ownership, the, you know, the for sale option, just to think through further with the the financial advisor that we've been talking with and, you know, the and uh and S M H O about how could that work? Um just bring back more information on that option at that meeting.
Right, but.
It just won't be great detail.
Yeah, it there's. I I'm not feeling there's enough nuances. If we do a for sale, is it for sale along market rate or is it deed restricted? If we do rentals, is it sixty percent, eighty percent? How do we do that? It it seems like we need options under the options. And I wanna make sure we're getting that, but I I think what you're telling me, it's too soon to ask for that.
Well, I, well, we, right now it is, but I mean, I think at that point in time, we can ask for it. And I I mean, are you, so what I'm, you know, I'm I'm going up even, you're going down in different options, I was going up higher. Either buildings stay as is or they don't, and we can figure out those. And if they, we move to stay as is, we can have like, okay, is it for sale? Is it for sale at affordable rates, market rates? Is it rental? What what does that look like? I think at that meeting, we could have that discussion.
I I don't know how people feel that maybe they feel, well, I would be interested in staying as is as long as it's affordable. And 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 is that an option if we go down that path? Or I I I'm afraid that we don't have enough information to know which way we want to go if we don't have a little more detail.
Well, I think at that regular meeting, staff can have, in the packet, have more detail on the various things.
That would be great, that would be great.
Does that make, does that make sense?
In other words, so.
It does.
Not giving direction, but we're asking for more information.
That's for more for information on.
Say say the twelve weeks.
And appreciate the financials on it, the detailed financials. Oh, yeah, I mean, this is, this is the most robust presentation we've had. It considers so many op- options, you know, in the in the review iterations that we've had on this.
Steve, were you gonna say something?
I have a question about the uh affordable housing set aside we have in our ARPA designation. To, what is the date we have to encumber those funds?
December thirty first, twenty twenty four, and they have to be spent by December thirty first.
Okay, so there is a clock on a pot of money if we chose to use it. I think that is one of the primary purposes of ARPA. I'm happy to use funds in that way. I just wanted to bring up that date.
There's a date.
There's a date, twenty twenty six, right?
Yeah, spent by.
To spend.
And would disqualify if we did income subsidies or renovation or whatever?
We'll find a way to use it one way or another.
Yeah, yeah.
We are government.
So any other questions or comments? Is everyone clear? Staff clear on?
Yes, mayor.
So. Move forward with the community, community engagement with the residents, move forward with that on there, try to speed it up. H P B, broader community, anything else? More information at the.
On the options.
On the options on the, the regular meeting.
And 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 little different nuances to the, some of the options, I mean, I, we don't wanna go too far down the weeds because if we once we decide on a direction, but I think it would be hard to consider certain directions without a little more information.
And H P B's gonna give us that memo.
Yes, and am I responsible for?
I think it's staff.
I just wanted to follow.
That was one more deliverable.
He'd give it the right parameters, right.
I mean, that's great. And a raffle. And a raffle? Yeah, we should think about. We a little compensation.
Go back to sleep.
All right. No, no more questions. Thank you.
Can you take mine?
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, very thanks.
So. Five minute, well, how about go to seven fifty five?
Yeah, I mean, I think you should cover in those group of funds.
Oh. I do.
All right, so back for our second agenda items and we um raced once again. With Assistant City Manager Kathleen Osher here, um let's talk about legislative uh um issues, so Jim.
I'll just give a little bit of a tea up here, you know, even coming out of the council's retreat from this past weekend, I think one of the takeaways was that. We have some big, big goals, big challenges, we started talking about things like housing and other kinds of regional. Issues and um I think I've certainly heard the need for 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 Littleton to be engaged. At the regional level when it comes to those issues and I know we have some council members who are ready to uh to get more involved there. So um with our reorganization, we did it a couple of months ago, especially in the state manager's office. Um our Assistant State Manager Kathleen Osher will be heading up, I think, a renewed effort. In uh intergovernmental relations and that and that'll be to uh to strengthen those those relationships. At the staff level across those uh those key regional organizations. Also to uh to to support individual council members who are, you know, working on those various various initiatives. And then um you know, to also just communicate back to this whole council about what's happening. What the opportunities are and how we can best leverage our voice. So tonight's item is really touches most on one of those and that is our awareness and uh. Our voice at the state level when it comes to the legislature. Uh we are not quite midway, but we're, you know, we're we're now into the legislative session and um. So I've I I asked Kathleen to just give a taste of of what I I think will be a fuller. Legislative calendar and process in future years, but just to give an update on what's happening, what some of the the key. Issues are for the for the city that are um in full swing at the Capitol, so with that Kathleen.
Right, so you know, we are starting this effort now in in twenty twenty three, so just wanna preface that all by just starting.
You haven't fixed everything and finished everything already?
No, and uh as you saw in the staff communication, the focus is really gonna be more on strategic alliances. And then really informed engagement with, you know, entities, agencies, organizations that operate here within our local community. At the regional level, the state level and when appropriate, the federal level. Um we're really hoping to sort of learn as we go through this legislative session. Because what we'd like to do is be in a regular cycle in front of council in roughly the fourth quarter of each year. With a series of uh policy positions that council can discuss and then adopt as part of an overall city position. Um that we would have in place and hopefully facilitate a meeting with particularly our state legislature legislators. Um prior to the start of the legislative session in uh twenty twenty four. So that we're in a good position that we can clearly communicate where there is consensus among this body and and where we think there are opportunities. For us to lean in on various statewide efforts. You know, we know that that uh policy um and position paper is really gonna inform. How we um identify and pursue partnerships with various coalitions. Um where collaboration may be needed, where the city's advocacy um may able to uh may be possible to make an impact. So we know that um that might translate into uh funding commitments that you might pursue um or consider. Uh various partnerships, we also know that this is gonna play a role in our intergovernmental agreements as well, our I G As. So a few things are rising to the top, um and I think our partnership with the Colorado Municipal League. And then Councilmember Grove's participation with the the Policy Committee and all the work that you're doing through C M L. Um we know that uh one of the things that probably will be fundamental to the city's position is. We will always struggle if there are unfunded mandates um that we are not able to accommodate within our budget. I know that um you know, our five-year outlook has some challenges, so anything additional is gonna be very difficult for us to to consider. Um so that that feels like one of those things that will hold very true. Um we obviously uh in partnership with C M L are are focused on that local control and flexibility. You know, really making decisions that feel fully Littletonized and recognize Littleton as a community. So I think those will be some overarching themes, um but I do have a sort of preview of a few things. I'm gonna kind of, I've given you the broader, um let's see if it works. C M L overview from January, uh there is a legislative workshop that'll be held this Thursday. And um that'll be an opportunity for, I believe, let's see, so Councilmember Grove's attending that. Councilmember Valdez and Councilmember Barr. So um this will be just sort of an opportunity to kind of highlight some of the big issues, um but I think that'll be a more in-depth look. And there's a series of panels, we'll obviously hear from all of the C M L lobbyists, so it'll be a great opportunity to kind of. Get the the latest and greatest from what's happening there at the Capitol. Um the beer and liquor is anticipated to be kind of a slow year, um you know, as a as a group. How do they know that?
Legislatively, legislatively.
Not uh not, we're not reflecting on sales or right, like so i- in terms of legislatively. Because uh they do have a broad stakeholder group, um we're very blessed to have Colleen Norton um serving on that group. And and you know, has done a tremendous amount of work uh with our liquor liquor licensing authority. And so um really has been a statewide voice for those, so we're really happy to to have her there as part of that. Um we are seeing some interest in.
Tats on her as that as my day job as well.
Oh, you're on that as well?
Yeah, I get to attend those meetings.
Lovely.
Almost as fun as as any council meeting.
Hope that didn't pick up your mic there.
Or are you just gonna highlight or Kathleen?
Corey. Different meeting.
Highlight just the ones that are kind of affecting Littleton or you can go through all these?
No, I'm just gonna do a couple of them, yeah. Um so building codes, I did wanna highlight, um you know, there are some amenities for all genders. That are under consideration legislatively, I think we're um our chief building officer and and that. That contingent and trade association that helps support building officers, um you know, we're really interested in how this could be incorporated. Into future international codes, you know, you just updated to twenty twenty one, so that's usually on a three-year cycle. So we think there's a big opportunity to kind of do that work as opposed to um introducing this um more quickly. But I I think that that's one that we would highlight, uh given that you had just passed the new international codes. Uh we've had a lot of conversation about one fifty two at your retreat. Uh C M L has been actively engaged in trying to pursue a statewide change that would no longer require communities to go back. Um and lift that provision, uh it doesn't sound like there's a lot of memento. Which, you know, is is part of the reason that I think that'll continue as part of your conversation of potential ballot uh measures. Uh for our next municipal election, so we'll look forward to an update on Thursday to see if. You know, if there is any sort of last hope, but there are some bigger issues taking up uh the time there. The other ones that I would highlight and probably just uh again, you have this full packet from C M L. We'll look forward to bringing back an update from the legislative workshop as well, but I do think that there much of our conversation has been around housing. Uh the housing portion of the governor's State of the State speech was about a third of his speech. And um had, you know, a number of um. References to sort of a statewide preemption of land use and zoning codes. So I think it's something that we're watching very closely, I included part of that in your uh staff communication as well. Um but there is no draft bill, there's still no pen to paper. I'm not aware of any sponsors that have assembled yet, but it is one that we're we're watching very closely, do you have something to add?
The mayor had, you know, kind of mentioned it um last Saturday regarding uh Councilmember or excuse me, Governor Paulus's speech. Uh obviously, he has stressed um wanting to have affordability a main component. Of you know, kind of his his term coming up here. And I wouldn't say he's threatened necessarily for the state to get involved, but he has certainly encouraged a lot of. Our local governments to make it a little easier to address kind of the housing situation. And so that's something that places a lot of our home rural municipalities on edge. When the government seeks to start getting involved in land use issues, but it is certainly one of his policies to want to encourage that going forward. So we're certainly gonna watch.
C M L's not taking a position yet. Oh no, well, there's no bill yet, so. But but on on this, on this issue, I don't think C M L's taken a position. They don't take positions, I mean, they're they'll will fight for local control, I mean, I've spoken with Kevin. Um I know that Metro Mayor's Caucus is, this is big on our radar as well, I you know, two weeks, I think it was two weeks ago, three weeks ago. I was on the uh Executive Committee call with the governor's office, the governor wasn't there, but we're talking about about this. And you know, letting him know that, you know, the the cities are gonna stand together about, you know, we understand why we all support the. End goal, the result of that, the home rule aspect of land use, I mean, I know the complaints that we have locally about land use and zoning. Can you imagine when the the state says, no, we're controlling all land use here and this is what you're gonna get?
We don't wanna be California, let's let's control our own stuff.
Yeah, I I would just say, you know, and this is part of the purpose of this, I mean, this is gonna be a really huge theme coming out, not only this year. But in, you know, the next four years, you're gonna see things that kind of carve away at those things, so certain something we're gonna, we're gonna keep an eye on.
And just so you know, at the meetings that with the quarterly meetings we go to, what they do when this comes down. Or for any bill that's pending, um they actually take have discussion and take a vote on each one. And um the participants give direction to C M L.
And I I will say that um you know, there is a pretty concerted effort uh macro level housing policy. Like there are some areas that that the state could be helpful, um you know, in our challenges with construction defects. And then in for sale multifamily units have always been a huge challenge, there there are some potential policies. That the state could pursue that would help alleviate some of that difficulty, right? Cause it is, um there's currently not really a path to avoid litigation if you are building for sale. So um you have to manage that risk and that causes insurance rates to to be at a point that you can't afford to build those units. I think the um there's a lot of conversation about, much like at your retreat. Uh really concentrating housing around transit, I think there are, we're experiencing a lot of challenges with our regional transit agencies. So you know, there are some opportunities to to really think differently about um closing those gaps with service. And and making that a viable option that's connected with with housing, so I think those are the types of conversations that are being had with the state as well. So there are a number of things that um the state might be helpful on that would be complimentary to to the policies that we're looking at. I think your emphasis on missing middle um is something that is probably going to, you know, put you in sort of a thought leader position. Uh because that that is a challenging piece that other communities will be sort of grappling with at the same time. So I think there's a great opportunity for that, I know the Rocky Mountain Land Use Institute, their annual conference has a full day focused on housing. So I anticipate a lot of conversation there, so I'll be presenting as part of the one of the morning panels on inclusionary housing. Um along with Bozeman, Montana, so that, you know, we can start to talk about, Montana's going the opposite direction. So while we created a path for inclusionary housing here in Colorado, Montana has pulled back. Um the opportunity to to do that, so it'll it'll be a nice comparing contrast, I think, in kind of the Western context. So that's really the ones that I wanted to pull out for you, um I think this is probably gonna be the one that we'll have to come back. Um potentially in this legislative session, the the housing piece. Um there are, you know, a number of efforts that are happening, you know, relative to electronic sales and use tax simplification system. Which I think, you know, C M L in support of and and um, you know, that are gonna make uh for much better systems and and processes. There's a few things on transportation, obviously car theft is is up in Colorado, so there are a number of measures that are moving forward. Um to help address that, there should be some sort of guidance on um was the measure that passed for psycho asylum? Yes, so I think there'll be some um regulations around that, um Prop one twenty two here in the state. Uh so I think that there, you know, is it's a always a crazy time when the legislature is in. In session to try and track and follow, so we're very reliant on C M L. Um from that perspective, I think we also have really um much more strong relationships too with with new groups through our Economic Development Group. Obviously, we have a lot of um great expertise on staff and their trade associations. So we're trying to get in the regular practice of bringing all of those things together over this year as we learn. Um so that those can help influence your uh position and positions and policies that we adopt at the end of this year.
And along with what Kathleen's doing and C M L is doing, you know, obviously my office keeps abreast of certain things right now, you know. There is so much stuff that gets thrown on the wall that it it's kind of pointless right now to track a lot of stuff, cause so much of it is gonna die away. So we normally wait till we get a little bit more traction on certain things before we really start getting involved in terms of kind of analyzing what the impacts might might be.
Yeah, cause I know with at least with the housing issue, that, you know, the governor, their governor's office is having lots of conversations. Um as they said, there's no no language yet or sponsors, they kind of suggested that probably March might see something that they can kind of formulate. But I would imagine at the C M L workshop on Thursday, a lot of discussion will be about this, cause that seems to be front and center for municipalities.
It came up in the Housing Authority meeting last week. Hot topic.
Yeah, and uh I know um City Manager Becklinburg there is serving on a group with our um county commissioners. And you know, mayors and city managers in Arapaho County, where we're doing a lot of work and just kind of comparing and contrasting. Policies that have been adopted and and trying to get sort of an inventory of things that have happened. Cause um that that is a clear storytelling opportunity for for how communities have responded to this housing crisis.
Appreciate their, at least the tone of that meeting was, you know, tell us what you're doing, um how you're making a dent to it. And then what we could do to help, um I think they realize that the language in the State of the State kind of came across, shot across the bow there. Got some people to to sit up, I know one of the other things, other slides was um the municipal courts. Um and one of them was potential legislation on domestic violence cases in municipal court. Uh there was, at least at the uh Metro Mayor's meeting we had the other day, last week, was there had been talk about. Not allowing municipalities to try domestic violence cases and there was kind of discussion on. If the community wanted to do that, you know, there, I think they said there's six or seven that still do that in municipal courts to have the. do that in municipal courts to have the, I don't know, all the intricacies of it, but be at the same level as uh with the state. And not say you can't do it, but make sure you're doing it at the same, same level. And so we'll see that comes from.
Yeah. And that, for those communities, they have been very vocal on that, on that front, you know, as they participate with CML.
And Littleton came up in that conversation cause we no longer do that, but it was a recent change.
We, we certainly have the ability to do them, but yeah, lately it has been, all those go into county and a lot of that has come through, you know, I would say even prior to um COVID and the lack of uh the jails taking, taking individuals that, I mean, from a municipal court perspective, I'd say that's one of the larger challenges right now is capacity at some of our jails to be able to take some of our um, you know, those persons who've done bad things, not bad, made bad choices at the time that required them to be incarcerated.
Some of us think they're bad things. Not everybody thinks the way she does.
As opposed to just giving them a, a personal recognizant spot and letting them hit the street, you know?
So that's why they're doing it in municipal?
There was discussion on that, on, on, not a lot, but that's, I don't know if there's an actual bill on that.
Yes. Bad choice.
You're rubbing off.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Yes. Do you know if the legislative workshop, they don't normally record it, no.
So for those of us that work.
They like to have free and open conversation.
So, but on the CML website, they do do uh like a, a webinar.
Do you read the weekly State House report?
And so in the State House report is available on the website as well. So that kind of gives you um both kind of what's what's, what's in there, you know, like what's current and then what to expect for the next week, what's coming up to committee. So that's, it's an easy, yeah, like easy reference for um any movement and then what to expect. So that's kind of how it's broken apart.
CML sends a State House report every week of, of.
It comes from a person's name.
Is it Megan?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Does it come from a name or does it come from like CML?
CML.
All right. So that's what I have, new effort and we'll do a lot this year. And then we'll look forward to bringing that back as a regular feature in your fall. Yeah.
Good job.
Good.
Great. Thanks Kathleen.
All right. Uh, any update report from the city manager?
Just um the note that we know that there is some weather coming tonight. We don't know what it's gonna be for sure. So I'll be chatting with the police chief and the public works director at five thirty in the morning just to kind of try to project on what the um impact on the, that morning commute time is. That's always the kind of question time. Um, so it's possible that you'll see a, a notice of a two-hour delay tomorrow. Uh, but at the same time, looks like the storm could not be, you know, could kind of miss us here. And if that happens, then you know, we'll, we'll think about, so.
You could just save us all the trouble. Close the city to, tonight and then it won't snow tomorrow.
That is probably true.
Good point. That's a good point.
That's the lament.
Uh, anything else?
No, thanks.
And on that note, I would say that Councilmember Valdez probably remembers when people woke up early to get to work on.
They used to get up early to go to work instead of this.
Some of us still do.
They used to get up the day before.
You have no choice.
So the attorney, do you have any like report?
Real report? I do. I do. I received um notification from Phil Weiser with the Attorney General's Office. They have um reached a proposed settlement with five additional uh distributor, distributors of opioids which uh would amount to an additional five hundred forty-nine thousand dollars coming to the city, assuming I, I get direction to enter into those um settlement agreements. So I know we're planning to have a discussion regarding the use of the, the current opioid funds that we have um shortly. A study session. I know Jim's working on getting that set up. Um, so this will help further that conversation.
You said it's gonna add another five hundred some?
Yeah, the original, the original settlements that we agreed to with kind of the big three at the time was approximately six hundred thousand dollars that the city would receive over a span of about eighteen years. Um, these five settlements are a little bit shorter in duration, but it's that same sort of pay over time type scenario. So I can't.
There's some real money here.
So it's a six hundred thousand over eighteen years plus the, plus the five forty-nine?
Correct.
Different.
Yeah, it's a different, it's a shorter timer. It's gonna be less than eighteen years.
And we'll have all kinds of different options of what we could do with that in terms of contributing it to what the county's doing. That's what I'm serving on and writing those requests for proposals, plus stuff we could do on our own with that piece. So there's a lot of pieces there.
And I remember the first time you reported on this, the dollar amount was so low, spread out over twenty years, like eighteen thousand or something. And man, it's, it's turned into some real money now, so that's good.
Yeah, I would say, you know, we got our first um tranche, if you will, um which amounts to about seventy-seven thousand dollars that was sent to the city a few weeks ago. So um, I'm sure that's in Tiffany's four oh one or something like that, but um that's.
Have we dedicated what that's for?
It's restricted.
Are you kidding about that?
That's our city attorney.
He's kidding.
Did, have we, have we, well, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
That's, that's. Study session.
Okay.
Those, those county, those countywide purposes are taking shape and Greshen's been helping to pull those together, so it's, it's time to plan a study session soon.
Yeah, good.
Excellent.
Okay. Anything else?
All right. So everyone have a good, happy rest of your Valentine's Day and we're adjourned.
I love spending my birthday in Valentine.